We're on record.
We're on record, okay. The meeting of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, July 10, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If we could do the roll call, please?
Mayor Barbario.
Here.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Stangley.
If we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual sovereignty and justice.
All right, this meeting is open to the public, to the general public. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this board on something that is not on tonight's agenda? Hearing and seeing none, we shall move on to the resolutions. We have one resolution tonight, 23:5, or, you know, colon 510. A major soil moving permit. Do I have somebody willing to move this resolution?
I will. President's to approve application number 23:510, Alpha Investments LLC, 52 Navajo Avenue, block 525, lot 21, major soil moving permit.
Do I have a second?
Second, Meth.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DePiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Chairman, we also have a resolution from the minor meeting. It's 23509.
Okay, do we have enough?
We have two regular people here, two regular members. You don't believe it's one, correct?
Well, yeah, so, Mr. Math and Mr. Mealy. Can motion, second, and vote.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, I'll do that resolution.
Very good, sir.
A motion to approve resolution for application 23:509, Rupee Shah, 58 Myetta Road, blocks, lot 271, lot 10, a two-lot minor subdivision.
Second, Meth.
If you call the roll, please?
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
All right. We do what we have to do. All right, then, we move on to our other piece of business here. We've got the minor meeting that we have to conduct. Now, because of summertime being summer, we have, the minor subcommittee was not able to meet, but we are able to meet in lieu of the minor subcommittee. So, did you include the material in our papers, or?
I don't have a copy of this.
Okay, you know, I have a few others. I, you know, I did not realize that, like, the entire room was going to participate, so...
What is this?
This is, uh, application number 23:513, J&amp;J Farms Creamery, 100 Jefferson Road, block 737, lot 5, zone SED 5A, minor site plan for docks, rooftop refrigeration units, sign and car.
Well, I have this, I just don't have this guy as a representative.
Yeah, that's what...
No.
Good evening, everybody.
Yes.
Steven Tombolakian from Wiener Law Group, on behalf of the applicant, J&amp;J Farms Creamery. Thank you for hearing us this evening.
Very good.
Now, to familiarize, to get the board located, the building we're talking about here, which is up on that easel, which our engineer will go through in a few moments, is 100 Jefferson, which, if I'm not mistaken, is the largest single building in Parsipity. It's enormous. And what our client, J&amp;J Farms Creamery, they were initially seeking to lease the then-vacant 200,000-square-foot warehouse portion of it, but they loved the property so much, they bought it. They bought the whole thing. So, but they are going to be using the 200,000-square-foot existing warehouse, but repurposing it and converting it to cold storage. So, tonight, you're going to hear about the building improvements, which are, it's going to be a penthouse for equipment, which is going to be built on top of the warehouse to house refrigeration units, to make sure they're all inside and quiet. And then, there's going to be some moderate changes to the loading docks and various ancillary site improvements, and Matthew, our engineer, is going to go through those changes. And we're also re-paneling the sign to show the new tenant, new tenant to join the existing other two tenants, we'll talk about that as well. So, without further ado, I'd like to swear in my first witness, Matthew Bersh, a principal of dynamic engineering.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide the board with background on your qualifications.
Absolutely. Matthew Bersh, B-E-R-S-H, I'm with Dynamic Engineering, 1904 East Street, Lake Como, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I'm a principal with Dynamic Engineering. I have over 11 years of experience in the field of land development, and I've been accepted by numerous planning and zoning boards throughout the state.
All right, before we move on here, I'm going to ask our planner if we need any waivers or any, I know this is supposedly a minor...
We still need waivers. So, there are a number of waivers associated with backheads in existing building and site and most of the work is interior. To go through them, from the minor site plan, it is number 11 for the contours, 12 for spot elevations, 18 for existing and proposed utility services, 19 existing and proposed storm drainage, 20 existing and proposed site illumination, 21 landscaping plan, and also 27, the temporary contractors, construction, storage areas, 28 traffic study, 29, the environmental assessment report, and 30 tree protection and removal plans. Our office doesn't object to any of those waivers based on the proposed project.
All right. Do I have a motion approving the waivers as outlined in the, in the report from our planner, dated, what was the date on that, 5/9/23?
June 12.
June 12, sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mealy.
A motion to approve the waivers as noted by our planner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, all right.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chairman. So, we are, we do have Ms. Winter's June 12 planning report. We also had Mr. Canziano's June 2 report. So, after Mr. Bersh kind of gives the board an overview of the site, the surroundings, and generally what we're proposing to do on the outside of the building, we will run through and provide the testimony that was asked for by Mr. Canziano and Ms. Winter's as outlined in their letters. But, without further ado, Matthew, if you want to go up to the board and orient the board to what we're proposing tonight?
I'll try to touch on the board professionals review letters as much as possible, just in their testimony, but whatever I miss, we can, we can get at it. So, the exhibit that's before you is the aerial map. This was part of the submission package. It is sheet two from the site plan set dated 4/4/2023, and it was prepared by my office. So, the subject property is located directly in the center of the page. It's outlined in yellow. For orientation purposes, north is to the top. The subject property is known as block 737, lot 5. The address is 100 Jefferson Road. Jefferson Road runs north to south on the right side of the property here. Subject property is located in the SED 5A zone, that's a specialized economic development zone. And as mentioned by the project attorney, there is an existing warehouse on site today. You can see that the warehouse roof is really built for whiter color within the yellow property boundary. The overall square footage is just under 540,000 square feet. The subject property is located, it's on Jefferson Road. There's two driveways leading out to Jefferson Road. Those are both full movement driveways. There's also three alternate driveways that are provided via cross-access to lot 3.1 and 4.1, which are to the east and north of the property. One of those driveways leads out to Pomeroy Road that runs parallel to 87. So, our project is really situated on the east side of this warehouse building. It occupies approximately 200,000 square feet of the existing building, as well as the loading dock space. The other two tenants will remain within the building. So, with that said, after that introduction to the subject property, I'm now going to present our site plan. Again, this is sheet five from the site plan package that was included in this mission. This is dated 4/4/2023 and prepared by my office. So, as you can see, the site plan is really kind of zoomed into the specific area of the site where there are some minor improvements being made. Orientation, north is to the top of the page again. So, the proposed improvements really revolve around the loading dock area and are situated within the loading dock area only. In current conditions, there's a number of loading bays, and right now, the truck's back into the building. There's an interior elevated finished floor, so the trucks, the loading and unloading operation is within the building. As part of the new tenant plan, they'd like to bring that finished floor out to the exterior facade, so there could be a little bit more of a standard loading and unloading operation with the trucks staging outside of the building rather than inside. So, since the trucks will be staging outside of the building, there are some modifications on the loading dock area. We will be restriping. We will be providing a concrete strip for the trailer landing gear. It's not shown on the plans, but we will agree to add that. There's also a modification to the island, just on the south side of the loading dock area. Right now, there's a sidewalk that runs on the north side of that island. However, in order to provide the standard 130-foot loading dock space, 60 feet for the actual trailer storage area, and another 70 feet for maneuvering, that island has been shifted back. So, the sidewalk that's in that island now is essentially going to become asphalt with curb. That sidewalk in existing conditions doesn't really serve a purpose. There, it leads to kind of an open general area that's really just asphalt, and we really don't want to promote pedestrian or impeding traffic in this loading dock area, so we feel that it's suitable to remove that sidewalk. As mentioned by our attorney, there's an existing sign that's located at the southern driveway along Jefferson Road. The sign is there today. The only thing we're going to be doing is adding a panel that fits within the existing panels that are on that sign to say J&amp;J Farm Creamery. There's no change to the number of parking stalls, no change to the number of loading docks, no change to any of the zoning criteria, previous coverage setbacks, that all remains as-is. There's no new variances being created or existing non-conformances that are exacerbated. Just to touch on some operational characteristics, we anticipate adding a compactor in one of these loading dock bays that will be used for, obviously, trash collection, and then there will be a private local hauler that comes relatively regularly as needed to remove the trash from the site. To continue on with some operations, it's anticipated that there will be 125 employees, 25 of those will be office employees with another 100 in the warehouse. The warehouse employees will operate on three separate shifts. It still totals 100 employees, but three separate shifts. The office hours will be 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The warehouse hours will be 24 hours a day, six days a week. The number of trucks that are anticipated to be unloading at this site are 30 per day between the hours of 4:00 AM and 2:00 PM, and the number of trucks that are going to be loaded at this facility is approximately 40, and that will occur between 5:00 PM and So, I believe I touched on all of the site changes, zoning criteria, and really a summary of the operations. So, in summary, the proposed improvements exterior to the building are relatively minor, don't really change the nature of the use or the character of the surrounding area.
Mr. Bersh, a couple of questions, just to cover some of the questions asked by Mr. Canziano and Ms. Winter. Would you, would the applicant stipulate that a property survey will be submitted that indicates the total number of loading bays and parking space?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any changes to the water service or sewer service to this building?
No.
So, the services will remain as constructed?
That's correct.
Mr. Dietz, the architect is going to be talking about the height, but for purposes of the construction that's proposed to implement these changes, will there be any need for a construction trailer or any onsite staging that might impact parking or traffic?
We don't anticipate it. If the chosen contractor does feel the need to have a trailer on site, a trailer or a staging plan can be provided as a condition of approval prior to construction.
With that, I believe we covered all of the testimony that was requested by the board's professionals. Mr. Bersh has to answer any questions the board has before Mr. Dietz comes up.
Are there members of the board that have questions of this testimony at this time? Mr. Math?
Just one. It relates to that sidewalk that's being taken away. If I notice on your plan, there's a, looks like a walkway to the adjoining property, is, what's the status of that? Is that why there was a sidewalk here in the first place?
I guess it was from when the building was first built or a previous tenant. There's really no interaction between the users in this lot and the warehouse tenant, so there really isn't a need for the cross-access. It's there, that, there's a, a set of steps in the sidewalk that is there, but it's not really used, to my understanding.
Okay, is there, are there easements to go with it? I think there's a note about that on your plan, right?
There, there is a reciprocal access easement between the properties, but it's my understanding that the walkway is not used.
According, it could be when everything was owned by Pfizer way back.
That's kind of what I was assuming, which is probably why the sidewalk was there, right? Because the one piece of sidewalk out in the middle of nowhere, just near that walkway, seemed to make some sense. Just out of curiosity, if you, did you run templates? Could you actually make the trucks work with the sidewalk, or do you just have to take it out?
There is a corner of the island over here that does restrict some of the circulation paths of the truck. And the 130 feet is relatively standard. They are going to be WV67 trucks, so really the largest truck that operates within New Jersey, so the tenant would prefer to have that full 70 feet of circulation area.
Understood, thank you.
Any other members of the board have questions in this testimony? Our planner raised her hand.
I've got one. The loading berths currently are in the building, they're not exterior, the loading spaces?
Correct, there are exterior doors, roll-up doors, but it's my understanding the trucks actually go into the building to load and unload.
Okay, so it appears that you will actually need a variance for the loading space size based on the largest truck that will be used, the length needs to be double that. So, I believe you said it was a...
It's a WV67 truck.
So, the 100 and, what, twice that, 134?
Yeah, approximately.
Okay, so, in the...
It's actually larger than that. That's the, 67 is the wheelbase, so there's actually more on the end.
So, it would be more than that?
It could be a little bit.
And the proposed spaces are 60 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so you would just need a variance for that condition?
Understood.
Actually, Christine, is that a variance or a design waiver?
Um, I believe it's, I'll double check, I believe it's under the variance.
It's in the zone. Oh, it's in the zone.
Mr. Canziano, did you have?
Uh, just, I wanted to understand the, your parking count that you had, you had stated the number of employees, the uses, I think it was like 202 spaces required. Is that for the whole building or just the 200 square feet?
That is...
200,000 square feet.
That is for the entire building.
Okay, and then there's 481 spaces?
Correct.
On-site, is that correct?
481 existing, whereas 202 are required.
And it doesn't have anything to do with the spaces that, with the cross-access easement?
No, it's this subject property only.
Okay. Yeah, that was it, thank you.
Sorry about that.
So, there was no notice provided for the minor?
We're going to have to kind of do a workaround on that one, because since this is a minor with no variances, just maybe some waivers. So, how can we work around, what is the maximum-sized truck that would fit what the land we have available? And maybe we would just stipulate that that, our trucks will, and then we'd have to come back for, to change that?
It'd be a 30-foot truck.
Yeah, it should be a WV50, it should fit within a 60-foot.
Okay, because, the reason is, since this is a minor site plan, it's not the full-blown hearing, we can't ask the board to grant us variances, so we're just going to have to live with what we can accommodate.
Actually, it, I mean, it looks like you just have an island there. You couldn't cut more island and make the space bigger?
It was only noticed for minor...
Right, which means, yeah, and I guess the other thing is, I mean, the wheelbase 67 implies a sleeper cabin on the truck. If you don't use sleeper cabins, it's like a wheelbase 63, so it's slightly smaller.
Yeah, well, the only thing we can stipulate is that we will, we can only accommodate the trucks that we can accommodate, and if we could remove more of that island to provide the additional length, then great, but we can't ask for a variance.
Okay, so, as I'm reading the requirements, length of loading berth shall be the horizontal distance from the front of the dock for back and parking to the limiting boundary of the loading and loading area shall be not less than twice the overall length of longest vehicle.
So, Matthew, based on that standard, is there any modifications? I mean, would that ask me to redesign the site on the fly? Is there any modifications you could do to that island to provide additional length?
Absolutely, the island can be adjusted. We would have to modify some of the site lighting. There is an electrical box within the island, but I think we can make it work in order to provide that inadequate loading space.
So, we would proffer that, to be self-important, is amenable to approving this minor site plan? We would work with Mr. Canziano's office, our engineer would, to revise the site plan to make sure that we comply with Parsipity's ordinance.
That's fine with me.
Mr. Canziano, do you have any?
No, that makes sense.
All right, are there any members of the boards have any?
I have another, I have a question, I'm sorry. I was just trying to understand, so, J&amp;J Creamery is not in this building yet?
Nope.
But the other two companies are there right now?
Yeah, they've been...
Lightet Quest and...
PN Lyne and Lightet Quest.
Those number of trucks you have coming in and out of there, that's the increase you're going to put on that building, in that area? Or that's just going to be what the total is now with all three companies?
No, that is for the J&amp;J Creamery farm.
Wow, so you're adding, it's like 40 something in the morning, you said? What was it again?
It's, it's 40 loading, 30 unloading.
Wow, per day.
Per day.
Any other members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any members of the public who have questions of this witness and this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none, counselor?
Thank you. I'd asked Chuck Dietz to come on up and put a copy of his plan and show us what magnitude he's proposing for this building to make. Now, Chuck Dietz is, should be submitted to this board by Charles Dietz of the Dietz Partnership, president.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, please state your name, spell your last name, and provide some background to the board about your qualifications.
Charles P. Dietz, managing member of the Dietz Partnership LLC, 90 East Halsey Road, Precipity, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional architect for the past 34 years. I hold 14 licenses around the country. I've been before this board numerous times, as well as doing many other projects within the town since 1987.
Any questions by members of the board on his qualifications?
Thank you very much. Mr. Dietz, now you proposed a penthouse addition to the roof?
Yeah, if I could just quickly, the three drawings that are part of my architectural set, my sheet A1, these three drawings were in your packet, just in a large view of what the interior of the warehouse of 200,000 square feet will look like. As you can see, this gray post-shade area, this is the current elevated loading dock, and this gray area is where we're going to fill it in with concrete, so the trucks can no longer pull into the building, they'll sit out in front at the loading doors and load like a traditional warehouse loading dock. My second sheet is my sheet A2, shows the elevation. Basically, this facade right now is a painted black brick. All these doors sit flush with the grade, which allows the trucks to currently drive in the building. What we're proposing, once we pull this up to the normal dock height of 48 inches, the doors will now be elevated, we'll have dock seals and bumpers and dock levelers, and basically fill in all the voids that we have there and have the trucks back up against this. We'll match anywhere we have to fill in as best as we can, we're going to have painted brick and other things, but basically, the facade and the aesthetics of this will look the same. My second elevation is the site elevation, and we basically generated that, this is what basically is paralleling Jefferson Road. The engineer has designed seven penthouse refrigeration units, and the defined penthouse means it's a package unit within a box, so you won't see any of the mechanical equipment. There's other units like that on the building for the other tenant's bases, and this just roughly shows you where they're going to go. They're going to sit on two feet of dunage, and with that two feet, they're going to move upwards of nine foot six above the roof. But again, as a package unit, you won't see any of the guts or any of the equipment, and knowing, working with the civil engineer and the other professionals, we looked at the surrounding areas for neighborhoods, which are across the street behind a series of other warehouse buildings, we don't think there's going to be any visibility issues of the residential neighbors. The other two tenants actually already have penthouse and larger equipment than even what we're proposing, which will remain for the other two tenants. And then, as per the, your professionals' request, after our initial submission, they asked us to provide a roof plan locating those penthouses. So, as you can see, there's three, there's three, and then there's one straggler over here in the warehouse area. One of the reasons they really need to move the warehouse to an outside condition is when you're bringing this type of product in, in a refrigerated situation, the loading area actually becomes a refrigerated area as well. So, it doesn't work when you have to bring all the trucks in and have the doors open, you'd lose all your cooling capacity. So, basically, the refrigeration goes to the entire 200,000 square feet, other than the office area that's existing that will reuse. The loading dock will be equivalent in refrigeration, we can create a seal at these doors, and they can bring the proper merchandise. This is a freezer, this is refrigeration only for the dairy.
Thank you, Chuck. I have no further question, Mr. Dietz.
Members of the board have any questions on this testimony? Our professionals have any questions? All right, then, if no questions, are there any members of the public who have any questions of this testimony? Hearing and seeing none, counselor?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you again to the board for, for hearing us this evening. I don't know how I can stress, this applicant is very eager to move to Parsipity, and we've been working hard these last couple of months to have it make it happen, and we are, of course, going to work with Mr. Canziano's office to make sure that we conform 100% of Parsipity's code and do it the right way, and, and I know that's going to happen, because I believe this applicant really wants to relocate by the end of the year.
So, your applicant is willing to, to work completely with our township professionals on making it so that it fits our laws?
120, 120%, absolutely. So, that's all I have. I mean, we do have a representative of the applicant, or the consultant for the applicant here, so you can answer any questions regarding who J&amp;J is, what they do, but they've, they've been around for decades, they're a known commodity, and they're eager to relocate to Parsipity.
Is there anybody in the board who have any questions about this?
You're good to have you.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
All right, seeing nobody needs to, any further education on the... Seeing nobody needs to, any further education on the applicant. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In favor of this application? Hearing and seeing none. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's application hearing. Does anybody want to say anything, or do we want to go straight to a resolution? Do I have somebody willing to make the motion approving this application?
Sure, I'm just gonna find the note. Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of application number 23:513, J&amp;J Farms Creamery Road, or Creamery, Inc., 100 Jefferson Road, Block 737, Lot 5, Zone SED 5A. Minor site plan for docks, rooftop refrigeration units, sign and parking, subject to the elimination of a potential variance on the loading dock by modifying the island.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
Piero.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Palatano.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
We really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy Parsippany.
Thank you.
All right. So now we can move on. Now for our other business, we're moving on to the regular agenda for the planning board, and that is area in need of redevelopment for Sixth Sylvan Way, Block 202, Lot 1.9. We've got a report and a presentation by our planner.
Yes, it's my turn. So as the planning board requests that our office do a preliminary investigation to determine whether Sixth Sylvan Way is an area in need of redevelopment, our offices visited the site, done the research, which compiled into this report. Give you a little background, the existing site is about 18.64 acres. It is currently occupied with a commercial office building, a Class B office building, and associated parking, and also houses the local Little League on the rear of the property. The existing conditions, it's in the RL zone, the research office and laboratory. There's an existing three-story building, approximately 212,000 square feet. It was completed back in 1981. It's been occupied by Avis Budget Group for 27 years. And they have decided to leave that building. Their lease expired in March, and they're, currently they're under a short-term extension until the end of October. At that point, the office will be vacated. The owners have attempted to secure a new tenant and have been unable to. So the existing building is 40-plus years old. It has the original systems. These have all been detailed within the report. There are several essential repairs that are needed to bring it up to current standards or even to Class B standards. These include things like repairing the exterior current walls, modernizing elevators, new roof, new boilers, chillers, storm drainage improvements, improvements to the parking lot, fire panels, new refrigeration in the kitchen. Additionally, asbestos-containing materials were still used in construction through 1978, so an investigation for such materials would also be needed. If you look at the report on page 17, it starts with some pictures of the existing site, notes on some of the rust and peeling paint. We also have evidence of potential vermin, points of entry, which can cause all kinds of health issues, and further deteriorate systems, sometimes even on electric and start fires. So represents a threat to the health and safety of the residents, the employees, anyone within the building. There are also potential evidence of mold, which causes further health concerns. A full investigation would be needed to determine to the extent of that. In addition, as we know, Parsippany has a, a lot of vacant office space currently. As part of this report, a, a report by Kushman and Wakefield on the, let me make sure I say this right, the opinion of value of this property. They indicated that there is currently about 5 million square feet of vacant office space in, in the town. In order to bring this building up to standards, to compete with that additional office space would require significant investment. So that's the existing conditions here. As we know, post-COVID, the demand for these types of office spaces has declined, so there are a number of factors into why this office is being, or the current tenants are downsizing, and there's been difficulty in getting a new tenant. So as far as the criteria required to declare an area in need of redevelopment, there's eight. A property only needs to meet one of them to qualify. This property meets four. These criteria are Criteria A, which indicates that the generality of the buildings is substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, or obsolescent, as the existing conditions show. Criteria B, when there's a discontinuance of the use of the building, which this building will no longer have a tenant come the fall. Criteria D, which also is a dilapidated, obsolescent building with faulty arrangement design and obsolete layout, resulting in vacancy and loss of jobs and no public benefit. And then the final criteria is Criteria H, which is related to being designated an area consistent with smart growth and planning principles. This is, in, the study area is located in the state planning metropolitan area, which is designated to provide for much of the state's future redevelopment. So based on the findings of this report, we recommend that this area be deemed, it qualifies under these four criteria, and we recommend that it be declared an area in need. And it would be recommended that the planning board make that recommendation to the Township Council.
Okay. Are there any questions on this planning report? I thought it was well done and fairly thorough there.
Very thorough.
Anybody have any questions on the report or on what we're supposed to accomplish here tonight?
I just have a question about the location. I know behind this, I guess you'd say it's north, are the Port Row West Little League fields, will they be hindered damage? Will there be any more drainage problems that has been there for years? Is anything gonna be affected by anything? We don't know that yet.
We won't know that. This is just kind of an existing conditions report. So assuming that it goes through, the next step would be to develop a plan for this area. And that would give an opportunity to rectify some of those drainage issues.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, with a little luck, it'll make it better.
Yeah.
Some sort of drainage would definitely help.
Yep.
I think this is...
Any other questions or comments on this report at this time? Mr. Inglosino, do you wish to say anything? I assume that you are representing the client.
I am, Mr. Chair. I don't have any comment. I think Christine did a terrific job explaining the existing conditions and emphasizing those conditions that would lead to a declaration of the area.
Okay. Mr. DiPiero, you are on the council. Is there anything that you might have to say about what you heard for this?
No. I agree with the recommendation.
All right. All right. Do we need, this is, yeah. All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this applicant, well, on this finding at this time? Hearing and seeing none? Either for or against? No? Hearing and seeing none? There is nobody from the public who wishes to come and speak before us? Is, Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments?
No. Drink's on me over there.
So I guess that we would then go to a motion. Is there somebody willing to make a motion that we agree to find that the, we should propose this as a non-condemnation preliminary redevelopment? How do you call this? What's the exact phrasing we should be using here?
A non-condemnation.
Yeah, non-condemnation. We find that this is a non-condemnation redevelopment, area in need of, or area in need of redevelopment. You gotta, you gotta write it out for me so I can read it, so I don't have to create Do I have a motion to the...
If it may, it's a recommendation that the area needs where a non-condemnation, the area in need of redevelopment, that its governing body that would actually make the declaration. It's just a recommendation based on the EFP report.
Absolutely. You are correct. And so, do I have a recommendation?
Yes, I will. I'll make that.
Mr. Napatautano?
A motion, motion for a recommendation to the town council to find this area at Sixth Sylvan Way, Block 202, Lot 1.9 is a non-condemnation preliminary redevelopment investigation.
Non-condem. This said, a non-condemnation area in need of...
Non-condemnation area in, in, area in need of redevelopment.
Yep.
Second, Neely.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Palatano.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. The result is the recommendation to the council that we have found that this is an area in need of redevelopment. Not a condemnation. Is there anything else that needs to come before the board? Nora, do we have anything?
Not this evening.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Get to stay here. So ordered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.